And they're successful on their own. I am retired from city government as the city clerk. I have a good understanding of what it takes to make the city government run. And I feel that my unique perspective gives me an edge on to fulfill that responsibility as representative of First Ward.
Thank you, Sheri. Raymond, would you like to answer next, please? Please tell us about yourself and your background.
Absolutely. And first of all, thank you to the members of the council for giving us this opportunity. My name is Raymond Starks. I'm an attorney at Moore McKibben Goodman Lorenz here in town. I joined here just a few years ago, and I've had a great experience thus far. I also serve as the Economic Vitality Chair for the Marshalltown Central Business District, and I serve on the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. Mr. Lottie Haft, please tell us about yourself and your background.
Thank you, Alicia. My name is Mike Lottie Haft. My wife and I have lived at 407 North 15th Avenue approximately 38 years. I have a 35-year-old son and a 13-year-old daughter, who's currently virtually learning through Marshalltown Schools. I was city councilman from, I believe, 1996 until 2002. I was elected twice when I retired. When this job position came open, I just thought, this is the type of thing I like to do. I always stay very involved with the community, whether through the UAW or other volunteering activities. And I believe I offer an interesting perspective on city government.
Thank you. Raymond, you can go ahead and answer this question first this time. Have you ever held a public office before or served on any boards, commissions, or committees?
Yes, I have. So I serve on the Board of Adjustment currently. I probably joined within the last year. I've never served an elected office, but that's something I've always wanted to do. Public service is important, especially when you join a community and you're a new member in the community. I think the most important thing is to get involved in the community. So that's why I'm here today.
Thank you. Mike, could you go ahead and answer that also?
Yes, I was elected twice through the Marshalltown City Council at large. I'm also volunteer on several committees throughout the years, whether as city representative to the Marshall County landfill, to several economic development projects. I do also volunteer quite a bit at Woodbury Elementary School here in Marshalltown. I'm the chairman of the UAW Community Services Committee. I'm chairman of the UAW Consumer Protecting Committee, and I also serve on the CAP Committee.
Thank you. Sheri. Have you ever held a public office before or served on any boards, commissions, or committees?
Yes. No, I have not been elected, but I have served on volunteer committees such as the Morning Optimist, where I was board member for several years, Secretary of Treasure for a few, and at our church with teaching little four-year-old kids and also mentoring single moms. So that's the breadth of my community service.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Mike on the next question. What will you do to help further the respectful relationships that currently exist between the city's elected officials?
I think a lot of it comes down to respect. Everyone wants Marshalltown to progress. Some people have a little bit different ideas than others, but when it comes down to it, you're all heading toward the same goal. And you have to sit down and remember that sometimes there is give and take in how you do things, and you're much better convincing and coming to a conclusion as a group than you are trying to say ground stand or play politics with issues. Marshalltown is best served if everybody's pulling together.
Thank you. Sheri, could you answer next?
Sure. Like Mike, I believe that we all do need to have respect for one another, and as we understand the differences that lead us to get to similar goals, we'll have maintaining positive communication between the councilors and the public at large. That's important.
Thank you. Raymond?
Yes, I think one of the most important parts of fostering relationships with other elected officials and community leaders is to build relationships and start right from the get-go. I think building relationships early on is going to be beneficial for you if you're either an elected person or an appointed person, or you're just dealing with other members of the community. Because if you don't build those relationships early, when you have a big issue or you have a concern, that's when that's going to boil down. And so having those relationships and building those early is going to be very important.
Thank you. Sheri, I'll have you start with this next question. In 2021 and beyond, we will have a number of items related to downtown redevelopment coming forward, including the Downtown Implementation Plan and Design Standards for Downtown. How will you ensure that you are representing your ward in any downtown-related discussions?
It's important for the downtown area as well as First Ward to be represented, and I would get out to the community and talk to people, the business members, the council, stakeholders in our community, that First Ward is so important to our community as our downtown anchor for our community vitality. It's important that we get enough representation as far as other stores so that our community feels comfortable shopping downtown and so that we become a place to be, a place to come to shop.
Thank you. Raymond, can you answer next?
Yes. So I think one of the most important parts of the redevelopment of the downtown is to start fostering those relationships early. I, as the Economic Vitality Chair of the Marshalltown Central Business District, have had a great opportunity to meet with local business owners, to talk about their concerns, talk about what needs to be done to make downtown better than what it was before the tornado. So I think, first of all, building those relationships and doing a very similar thing is essential, but also fostering those connections between business owners and property owners, and fostering those connections between the city, so those buildings that need to come down can come down, and we can get developers in there and fill those spaces when the developers decide they're going to build.
Thank you. Mike?
I think one of the most important things that we can do is listen to the business owners and property owners uptown. I know I don't like being told what you're going to do, and I would imagine that they don't either. And I find that more voices in the conversation tends to lead to better ideas and more joining of forces together to get the goal done. I think that the goals need to be clearly laid out, what their part is in it, whether it's small or large, and how you have to sell them on together creating an image and a vision that everyone can buy into. And that way, I mean, the devils are going to be in the details, but that way, people can see that you're actually moving forward and what their piece of that would be.
Thank you. I'll have Raymond start with this next question. What does the city need to continue to do to help the First Ward recover from the tornado and the deratio?
Absolutely. Something that I've had the opportunity to talk to business owners about and that I've heard over and over and over again is the buildings that are dilapidated and are not inhabitable, those need to come down, and they need to come down as soon as possible. Next, there is just not the right retail space and right space for the businesses that want to enter the downtown. So I've talked to a number of different businesses that are looking to move to the downtown or have considered moving to the downtown, but the problem that they're running into is not being able to be connected to those spaces where they would actually be able to run their business out of. So that's discouraging people from the downtown, because if you can't find the right space for you, it's just not going to work out for your business. So helping to foster those relationships when new development comes online is going to be very important, and also making those relationships with developers, once the buildings actually do come down, that's going to be very important.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, same question. What does the city need to continue to do to help the First Ward recover from the tornado and the deratio?
Well, I think we need to continue with helping people heal in their neighborhood. We've been hit with a tornado. We've been hit with a deratio. Now, the pandemic is causing quite a bit of stress also, and it kind of reminds me of the saying, I believe it's a Japanese saying, that fall down seven times, get up eight. And that means perseverance. It means long-term. Some of these things are going to take years and years, and it's going to take that type of determination to be able to make sure that when we're finally done. I read a study recently that they think that it takes a community about 10 years to recover from a tornado. And our tornado was only a couple of short years ago, but we've got a long ways to go, and they actually brought up Parkersburg. And Parkersburg now is beginning to feel like they are whole again. So we have to look at short-term solutions and long-term solutions. We have to keep getting at what we can get at, when we can get at. I think the people in Marshalltown Ward One are terrific people. They've been through a lot, and we're still standing, and yeah, we got up again. But just clear goals, outlining what everyone needs to do and what their part is in this, and to continue to find funding sources, because this is going to be a long-term problem.
Thank you, Mike. Sheri, what does the city need to continue to do to help the First Ward recover from the tornado and the deratio?
I think if we maintain, as a council, a positive voice image, a positive PR about the successes in the past, and build on the successes that we are currently experiencing the downtown, continue with the implementation of the downtown plan, review other plans that we have in place, encourage our business owners, the residents, just to keep pledging along, and also to explore some outside funding opportunities and view the challenges as an opportunities for springboard, and just to make the best of the situation that we have while we go through the difficult reconstruction.
Thank you. Mike, I'll have you start with this question. What city staff and departments have you interacted with and for what purposes?
I've actually interacted with all of them in the past. Park and Rec, Street Department, Fire Department, Police Department, City Hall, Sewer Department, Water Department, in the past, over various different challenges that we had before. Lately, I believe we interacted with the Water Department over an issue with my swimming pool. So I pretty much interacted with all of them, and they all do a great job. I should say that. I don't think you can find a more dedicated bunch of employees than what we have.
Thank you. Sheri, can you go next, please?
Sure. As serving as your city clerk for 20 years, I've had experience dealing with all the city staff and departments. I believe that one of the biggest resources of the city are our city departments and our staff. We have extremely blessed to have the dedicated employees and department heads that we do have, and I am familiar on how to utilize the resources and to inquire to the proper department as to what we're an opportunity for a resource improvement would be.
Thank you. Raymond?
So my primary interaction with the city has been through the council itself, and part of the reason I got involved in local politics here. So we had the safety zones issue, and before that, they were the quiet zones issue. As somebody who lived in the downtown, and I had a personal interest in helping that to be a better place where people could live, work, and play. And to do so, you know, I know the council was considering doing that, and I'm very, very thankful for the council actually doing that, because I think it has made the downtown. I think it helps development in the downtown in the future. So that is primarily where I've interacted with the city. However, also on the Board of Adjustment, I've interacted with the city there as well.
Thank you. Sheri, I'll have you start with this next question. The city has been working with the Iowa DOT for a number of years on enhancements for Highway 14 corridor from northern city limits to Anson Street. What value do you see in this project?
I am encouraged that the city would consider the improvement on Highway 14 to make it safer. I do believe that while change is difficult for many, having that road diet will be an improvement. That will take some getting used to for residents, businesses, but it will be a good improvement. Trying to cross two, four lanes of traffic as I go from my residence to the hospital complex or McFarland Clinic is a challenge at times. We do have quite a bit of heavy truck traffic on Highway 14, and I believe having that road diet will improve the safety and the convenience for the community.
Thank you. Raymond, could you answer that next?
Yes, I think the redevelopment of that is very important, because with the safety zones, one of the primary reasons that the council passed safety zones was because they helped improve the quality of life of this community by making this community safer. The same goes with this. By making the Highway 14 project safer for people who cross that way and who live in that area, it's going to make their quality of life higher, and that's essential.
Thank you. Mike?
I support the project. I think that a lot of misinformation usually goes around, but clearly identifying why the city is doing this and how it helps the residents there is one of the keys to make it work. Sitting down in the living rooms and talking to them about it, what the advantages are. You know, there's an old saying that change is constant, growth is optional, and I really do believe that. Just because it's been that way doesn't mean that it should always be that way.
Thank you. Raymond, I'll have you start with this next question. What are your strengths and weaknesses?
Well, I think I would start out with the weakness that is probably most apparent. When I look at the two other candidates who are running, I am noticeably a little bit younger than them, and I've not been a community member for quite as long. I view this as a strength, though, and the reason it is is because I chose Marshalltown. I went to Drake University Law School, and I went to Drake before that, and I originally came from eastern Iowa. So when coming to Marshalltown, I didn't have a family connection. I didn't live here in the past. I chose Marshalltown because in the summer of 2018, I was working at Moore McKibben. We got hit by the tornado, and it was devastating. But seeing how this community came together, I found that really inspiring, and that's why I came to this community. I think we need a member on this council that understands why people would want to come to this community and can figure out incentives to find other people that may come to this community that are not from here or that are returning from a four-year or even longer stretch of college. I think that's absolutely essential for our community to thrive, because we need new residents and because that propels us forward.
Thank you. Mike, what are your strengths and weaknesses?
Well, I think my strengths are I'm a very easygoing person. I'm very easy to talk to, and I do listen very well to people. I think I also overall have a pretty good vision of what Marshalltown should look like and the different pieces to put that together to make it work, and how you have to rely not on just yourself or just the city, working with all kinds of different agencies, other government entities, because that's the way you get things done anymore. Recently, we had a food bank at the UAW Hall because of the tornado, and the UAW could have just done it itself, and it would have been okay. But what we did was I put together a coalition of whether it was the Iowa Food Bank, Hy-Vee, the UFCW, JDF, the TEMA Packing Plant, Fairway. We even had the city of Wellsburg help. And by using many different resources throughout the community and even the whole area, we managed to do that for 16 weeks, 17 weeks, and helped the Marshalltown community for quite a while, until we felt that the food bank that we currently have could handle the load of the people when things got back to a kind of normal. But that's the type of attitude that you have to have, is you can't go it alone anymore. It's not 1975 anymore. As far as weaknesses, probably this type of thing, electronic. I do tend to overthink things at times, but I'm just a normal blue-collar person who's really interested in our community.
Thanks, Mike. Sheri, what are your strengths and weaknesses?
Well, my strengths are that, A, I love my community, and I really want to get back into a position where I can help things get better after the challenges that we've experienced, as well as I know what it takes to raise a family in Marshalltown. And aside from getting our housing stock ready and available for the workers to encourage them to stay, we can have all the housing available, but if we don't offer retail or activities for family members to engage in so that they can also be engaged in our community and make our community what I would love to see it be, that would be my dream. I'm a strong leader. I am an encourager. I lead by example. I'm very positive about the outcomes. When we're faced with a challenge, I always try to look for the silver lining. I'm retired, so I'm not working. I have time available to serve. And as far as my weaknesses, I put my heart on my sleeve, and more than I should, but I think that's what makes me relatable to individuals when I talk to them.
Thanks, Sheri. All right, Mike, I'll have you start with this next question. Identify two or three things you have done in the past to improve or promote Marshalltown.
Well, one thing would be our food bank that the UAW had just a couple of years ago. I also designed a playground, which I thought was just going to be for Woodbury School, and they took the plan, reconfigured it a little bit, and put it was for the preschool kids. And there's one of those at every single preschool in Marshalltown, if you drive by their playground. Just small things like that, where I can help, how I can help, and those are just two of the things I think that I help. I try and promote Marshalltown when I'm out and about. We seem to have an attitude sometimes of, oh, geez, Marshalltown, you know, we got it pretty good, and we got a darn good bunch of people. And I try and promote that, you know? And I would hope that I inspire other people to promote Marshalltown too, in the same way.
Thank you. Sheri, can you take that question next?
Sure. So actively, I haven't really been doing anything active, but I've talked to individuals that may have misunderstandings about what the community fathers have instituted, where they haven't liked something, and I contact them and I say, hey, I know you feel this way, but did you know? And just kind of fill them in. So I guess being an advocate, a vocal advocate, and just talking to people, and people listen to me as far as my knowledge and breadth of experience, as far as why the council's made decisions in the past. And as far as what I've done in my community, just picking up trash outside in the street. I live on North Center Street, and with the winds, it just seems to be a cyclone of trash. So I'll get out there and just pick up the garbage. And I had a gal across the street come out, and I would step my toe on her terrace, and she come out with her arms raised and on her hips, and she said, what are you doing on my property? And she was fourth-grade girl. And I said, well, I said, I'm just picking up this garbage. Would you like to help me? And she's like, no. But I gave her a thought as to how she could assist the community herself, and that's probably about it. But I enjoy talking to people and, like I said, advocating for Marshalltown.
Thank you. Raymond, your turn.
So one of the things I've had the greatest experience of in this community is helping out through the Central Business District. We've, you know, with the crazy year we've had and what a year it's been, our businesses have survived in the downtown through tornado. They survived through COVID, and they've survived through deratio, and they're still very strong. So one of the things we were very proud to do is be able to help those businesses find out what their needs are and connect them with the resources through the Central Business District, through Main Street Iowa, et cetera. But I think the most important thing is being an advocate for this community. You know, I think we need to bring new people to this community and introduce them to Marshalltown, because honestly, what have they heard about Marshalltown, but it has been hit by a tornado? They haven't heard about the people that live in this community, and introducing them to what this community means and what this community stands for and why the people in it are wonderful people and why they should be a part of it is absolutely important, and that's something I try to do every opportunity I have.
Thank you. Sheri, I'll have you start with this next question. The First Ward is also home to JBS. The city has quarterly meetings with JBS, of which you would be invited to be a part of. What messages would you take into these meetings?
Well, having worked at JBS for a dozen years prior to starting with the city, I guess from a city perspective, I think it's important that the JBS understands that their business has an effect on our whole community, not only with the stink, but with the employees and the benefits that they offer, as well as the how many times a dollar turns over. So every paycheck that JBS gives out, letting the community understand that those paychecks do come back to our community fourfold. So there's a two-way give with JBS, with the city versus JBS. They are almost being landlocked residentially, and they don't have much room to expand. And to let them understand, and I know they do understand, the impact that they have on the adjacent residential areas, and I think it's planning with the city And I think it's um, planning with the city to take advantage as some of those properties become vacant to create more of a buffer to some of the other residential area, other residences in the area.
Thank you. Raymond, can you take that question next?
Yes, I think one of the most important things we can do with JBS is figure out how we can best support them, how they can best support the community. JBS is one of our largest employers. Um, you know, we have to recognize that most of those dollars, uh, as Sherry very correctly pointed out, are coming back to our community, being spent in our community, being spent in in other communities in Marshall and Tama County. Um, so we need to figure out, you know, what their concerns are and how we can best help them. But alternatively, you know, e- express our concerns from from the city point of view. Um, that, you know, they they do create a bit of a, a bit of a smell that we all notice. Uh, you know, that the amount they pay their employees. Um, you know, is felt throughout the rest of the community because of how much money is being turned over. Because most, the many residents um, of this community are are employees in JBS. So uh, I I think it's a little bit of give and take. Um, but I think definitely supporting uh, supporting one of the largest employers in our community is absolutely essential.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Um, I live six blocks from JBS. So and we've lived here for about thirty-five years. So I'm very familiar with the comings and goings of JBS. Um, what some of the dust issues are along Marion Street, um, the stink issue. Um, but I think overall with the city, working with a meatpacking plant is is working differently than with, say, an Emerson Control or something like that, because it does uh, it it does affect people's quality of life. So working with them as partners, not as uh any type of uh adversary at all. Uh, realizing how we can work together doing things. Uh, they do an awful lot for the community. They do, but they're in also in a uh industry that is sometimes unsavory. Um, even the Woodland or the Ed Edward Street Extension will help. Um, and try and figure out common goals together and work toward creating friendships with them and continuing to help the community as they do.
Thank you. Raymond, I'll have you start with the next question. If a petition for a special election is filed, would you plan to be on the ballot for that election?
Absolutely. Um, if a special election is held, the same issues I've talked about today uh, and and that I've addressed in my letter about quality of life, bringing on new voices that are going to advocate for this community and bringing new members to this community. All of those concerns are still going to be there. Um, uh, all of the reasons I would want to, um, I think is so imperative uh, to have a voice like that on the council are still going to be there. So absolutely, I would run.
Thank you. Sherry.
Absolutely. I love this community and I want the community to be the best place in Iowa to raise your family. And for economic development and businesses and retail. I I believe that Marshall Town is uniquely situated geographically as well as industrial opportunities that we we have, we have a gem. So yes, I I would enjoy running on the on the ballot for a special election if one is petitioned for.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Absolutely. Um, I think I'm the best person for the job. And I'd like to get out and uh, talk to the people in Board One about it. But there's no reason not to.
Okay, great. We're down to our final question. And uh, Mike, I'll go ahead and have you start with this. Why do you want to represent the First Ward on the Marshall Town City Council and why should the city council members choose you?
Well, other than having the experience and that, I think I have true heart of a Board One in me. I care and love the people of Board One a lot. Um, I have a deep concern over the future of Board One. And even though we're coming out of some pretty bad times, I want, when we're done, to be very proud and everyone feel like they spent had a part in creating Marshall Town to be a better place to live and work.
Thank you. Raymond, go ahead.
I want to be the representative for Ward One because of quality of life. I I talked a lot about quality of life in the letter I wrote to the council. Um, I think it's the most important issue. Uh, quality of life is having affordable housing. Quality of life is having a downtown that is vibrant. And, you know, and there's a lot of, a lot, a large different retail mix. Quality of life is a recovery from the derecho. Quality of life is having a, you know, a wonderful park that we can uh, all celebrate in Riverview Park, even though it's sustained so much damage in the derecho. Um, I I I'm running because I also think we need a new voice on the council, someone who um, someone who shows this community, someone who understands why people would want to come to to this community and who wants to sell this community um, to prospective members. So um, I I I want to be on the council because I think it's important to raise these concerns, first of all, and to bring in new voices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Sherry.
Well, as I've said, I I love my community and I desire to serve to um make this community the best place in Iowa to raise a family, to live, work, and play. And and with that, um, to encourage business relationships so that we can explore alternatives, so that we can kill two birds with one stone, such as with our public-private partnerships that we currently have. I'd like to take the opportunity and maybe explore some others so that both our private world and the public world are both getting the best use of the resources.
Thank you, Sherry. Hey, Mr. Mayor, that was our last question.
Okay, thank you. On the agenda, we have another item listed as motions, and there could be a motion for appointment to fill the First Ward vacancy made now. Um, I don't remember how we did it when uh, the last two appointments were made. Um, I understand from the city administrator who's got some comments from counselors that uh, maybe tonight isn't the time to make that motion. So and and we certainly have another meeting coming up shortly where that could happen. Um, so I'll leave it open to the council to see if anybody wants to make a motion. And if there's a second, then we can vote on it. If there is not, we'll probably just take this under advisement and expect a motion at the next regular city council meeting.
Your Honor, may I ask a question?
You may.
Has there been any um, indication of a petition for a special election at this time?
Well, nothing official has been turned into the clerk's office. But um, I have heard people express that they thought there would be that petition being turned in.
Okay, but we have no, we have not received anything as of this point.
I'll leave that to the clerk to answer, but I'm pretty sure she would have told me if that had happened.
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Let me leave the uh, opportunity open for about fifteen seconds if somebody's trying to formulate a motion.
So, Your Honor, this is Gabe.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, I no, I guess just the other. Curious, is there any opposition to making a resolution based on um, interview questions? Um, and anything else that you've been privy to to have a conversation tonight? Or I guess I'm I'm at a little bit of a loss of why we aren't willing to have a conversation now because we'll have the same conversation next meeting.
May I also follow up on that question? Do we have Council, um, Counselor Warren and Counselor Martin on the call?
To my knowledge, we do not.
No, they are not.
And a point of clarification, um, is this a majority or a supermajority, or what is it in order to pass this resolution or the motion it made?
It's my understanding it's a simple majority of those present that we have.
It would be a simple majority vote.
It would, would not. I'm sorry.
I heard it would be.
This is Roger. And and it is my opinion that it's a simple majority vote.
So I guess Roger, to clarify, essentially unless unanimous vote tonight, then the vote would be passed.
Gabe, I don't know if you're asking me a question you were cutting out. I couldn't hear what you said.
Yeah, no, sorry. I was, I wanted to clarify this point. So there's a supermajority required of which would mean five out of seven and therefore would require a unanimous decision tonight if a resolution was to be passed. Is that correct, Roger?
It is not a supermajority.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood how you clarified. Thank you.
It's my understanding because five of seven are here tonight. We do have a quorum and a vote by three counselors would suffice to uh, put a new person in the position.
And can I clarify, is Counselor Thompson on the call? I never heard him early on.
Yes.
Yes, yes, Sue, I am here.
Thank you.
Oh. Let me start that clock. You may. Go ahead. I I think I heard.
I'd like to say that uh, what was that, Joel?
Yeah, I was, I I was recognizing you as Counselor Thompson to go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, what I wanted to say is um, all of us on the council, I believe, are taxed taxed with doing several things and voting on several things. Um, I think it's common knowledge that I do not believe this is one of the things that we have the the right. I mean, we do legally, but we, I think that the taxpayers should decide who represents them in First Ward. So I think that we have three excellent qualified candidates. I would just prefer to see them, they all said they would run in a special election. Um, I would like to see us move forward with that. Um, that way it puts it in the hands of the voters of First Ward. I think each of them has different strengths, strengths and weaknesses. Um, any one of them can hold a seat up here with us. I know that uh, that all three of them can do a lot better job than I'm doing. So uh, with that said, uh, no matter who is presented um, for a motion, I will vote no, not personally against them, but just personally against, I think the taxpayers, the residents of First Ward should make the decision, not the seven of us. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else for the next ten seconds?
Your Honor, I have a question concerning um, Mr. Thompson's comments that it was my understanding um, that a special election would have, if one is presented, that it had to take place within sixty days of the petitions for election being presented. Is that correct information? That could be to the city administrator or the city attorney?
That is correct. We would, we would ultimately present any valid petition to the county auditor's office to schedule that election.
So that election could possibly not take place until March or uh, late February or March. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, I would have a concern. I would, even if I do not disagree that the First Ward should select it, but I think we need to take the opportunity to appoint someone at this point because I would hate for First Ward not to be represented throughout the talk of our budget issues until the March timeframe when someone would be selected through an election. It was my understanding that if we appointed someone at this point or the next meeting, that they would maintain the spot until, and then if someone put forth a petition for the election, they could put their name in for the election. And if someone else was elected, then that person elected would take over the seat. But I agree that all three of these people seem to have the heart of the First Ward um, at their thought process. And I think it's very important that First Ward have a representative as we go through the important um, information and council decisions that take place over the next sixty to ninety days. So I would hate for us to sit without anyone on the board representing First Ward for that time. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
And I would agree with Sue with regards to that. Um, I think with the meeting coming up budget-wise and other, um, having the absentee from the First Ward, um, I don't think would be in, I would not be in favor of that. Um, and and I guess in addition to that, the remaining part of the term would be for nine months roughly until there'd be another election, at which point um, the discussion would come up and for a regular election. And I guess so, with that, I would make the motion uh, for appointment for Raymond Starks for the First Ward council member.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I give it the fifteen-second clock. So I will declare that motion failed for lack of a second. Is there any other motion that anyone would like to put on the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was talking without, uh, this is Mike. Uh, I was talking with um, muted. Um, and so I did hear uh, Gabe's um, motion. Um, I'm I'm struggling with Gary, I guess, is going to vote no. So I'm struggling with four of us making this decision, knowing that I also made the comment at the council meeting that uh, anybody that we uh, would put on would have a leg up and on uh, some experience on the council. Uh, making notes from everybody that we did as questions were asked, I think I'd uh, be happy to serve with any one of them. Uh, I uh, I'm still struggling with uh, probably a question or not a question, but a statement I'd made at the council before of of getting young uh, people involved in the council. That is uh, only because I can see the people that are running. I knew knew no Sherry. And um, I've interviewed uh, Mike before. Uh, that being said, um, I'm still struggling with only having four of us make a decision. Uh, knowing that we probably should because of the budget, so if I'm hedging here a little bit, I'm sorry, but that's uh, I'm I'm just struggling with four of us trying to make this decision out of seven people. trying to make this decision out of seven people.
Your Honor, this is Gary, if I may again.
You may. Go ahead.
I don't want to make this, I don't want to make this personal, but one of the things that I did raise earlier was if Councilperson Cahill was so concerned about first ward being not represented during the budget talk, she could have made her resignation effective the day after she knew she won the election in November and that seat would have been filled, you know, a lot earlier than the March timeframe of, you know, a special election. You know, the clock is based on her resignation being effective the end of this year. So I guess I differ, not on a personal level, but on a strategic level that she's the one that sets this clock, is putting this election in March, not the rest of us. I mean, there are some constraints at the county. There's some rules that have to be followed. So again, and I agree with what Mike said, anybody we appoint, we're telling the community that that's the one we want to be in that seat. And that may deter certain people from voting, and I don't want that to happen. It didn't work when Dan Kestner was appointed and then Sue won the election. I don't think it's going to work now. I think the best option is to hold off for an election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak, Your Honor?
You may.
I don't think we received a second. Am I correct?
Not yet.
To Gabe's motion?
Right. I have not heard a second yet.
Well, we don't have a motion that's active. Could I make a motion to table this till next Monday when all seven people are here? I think it's basically unfair to not have a majority of the people here to make this decision.
I'll consider that was a motion. Is there a second to that motion to table?
Your Honor, I think I would second that only for the simple reason that I think, in my heart, I think that there is a petition out there. And unfortunately, I'm not sure we're going to see that unless we make a decision. That's just my gut feeling. But the only reason I think I would second that is simply because I would like, if at all possible, that we could have all seven of us with an opinion. And I don't think that one week is going to make a difference only by looking at the schedule for the budget. And I think if we're going to move forward with an appointment, knowing that there's probably a petition out there, we just have to take that chance and appoint somebody. And if a petition comes forward and it goes to an election, then the person we nominate has been there two months and it may end up that we get somebody all new to finish that term out till November, when quite possibly, there could be three of us other council up for election, plus, Your Honor. So I guess I wish that everybody was here, but there are circumstances where that's not, didn't work out tonight. So I would second that motion.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second to table it. Before calling the roll, I would hope that anybody who's unable, if this passes, I hope that anyone on the council unable to attend at the next meeting would let his or her vote be known to the rest of us so that we have had input from them. But with that, let's call the roll.
Gaudy.
Yes.
Hoop. Iston.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Cahill.
Yes.
Well, don't let it be said that we don't, that we always have unanimous votes on this council. I'll declare that that did carry. The motion is tabled to the next meeting.
Your Honor, a question?
Yes, sir.
Before we have our next meeting, since this was in advance, scheduled and otherwise known by all the council members, I just want to communicate and understood on who's going to be present, being that that was the hurdle we had overcome to have an effective council meeting tonight. So I'm slightly frustrated by the council members as elected to be able to make a decision and come to the point of making a resolution. So I hope we're able and can confirm everybody will be there next meeting so we can have an ability to have a conversation, which obviously didn't happen tonight, which I find very frustrating.
Well, taken. With that, we, because of this question.
If I may, you have another comment, Your Honor?
Go ahead. Yes.
I want to say also that since we're moving that, we're moving that motion to next week, now we've opened the door for the possibility of violating open meeting laws because now we've put ourselves in a position that the seven of us will have private conversations amongst ourselves on which candidate we like the best.
That's not our.
I like that idea. Thank you.
Well, nothing prohibits any one of us talking to two people at a time and still complying with the open meetings laws. So yeah, if three or four or five of people get together and they're talking about this together, that would be a violation of the open meetings laws. Don't do that. But if you want to visit with each other, there's nothing that says you can't do that one-on-one or one-on-two. And if I gave, if I gave bad legal advice, I invite Roger Chell to correct.
Mr. Mayor, you are correct that there is nothing that prohibits a council member from speaking to another council member in a non-open meeting situation. The problem occurs when there is a majority of a council present.
All right. Okay, any other comments? And I'll leave that open for 10 seconds. Otherwise, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.
No, listen, Mike. I happened to see that Bethany has joined. And would just wondered if she had heard any of these questions and answers and if she may have a comment or two that might lead us to maybe a better decision on Monday.
Hi, Mike. Thanks for noticing. I had another meeting and was able to get out of it just now. So I'm going to watch the recording and I guess if I have any questions, I'll follow up with the candidates one-on-one. Thanks, Mike.
That's quite all right. I just noticed that your camera was on and I, truth of that, I wish we could have came to a decision. I just felt that all of us should be here. And it is a difficult decision. And there's a lot of people that watch this and are interested in who their council people representatives are. And maybe I'm just getting old and cranky, but I feel like we should make a good informed decision. And I'm sorry that it depends, people. But I guess you're still going to put up for another year.
Unless anybody else has anything to say, I would. Yeah, go ahead.
Your Honor, this is Gary. If it's my understanding of our chapter 35, one of the people that voted yes on table and it can actually bring that back up to vote right now, now that we have Bethany here.
What's the vote on?
That's a good question.
The table, the decision-making process, until next Monday night. But it's my understanding, and the reason why it's happening that three of the councilors felt uneasy that you and Bill were not in the meeting, but you are here now. And it's also my understanding that any yes vote, any vote that carries, any one of the people, the three that voted yes to table it, can actually bring the table back up for re-vote and kill that one and then actually put one of the candidates up for vote again now that you're there.
Pardon me here. May I, Your Honor?
Please do.
Oh, Roger.
The motion to table puts the item on the table. And it stays on the table until a later agenda item provides notice that it will be brought from the table for further discussion. I'm quoting from the council manual in that respect. So I think that it's on the table and remains on the table until it's placed on the agenda for another meeting.
Thanks. I have a pretty good sense that we were not going to get anybody moving to put it back on, take it off the table tonight, anyway. But I'll keep the mic open 10 more seconds in case anybody else wants to speak. Okay, I hope the sky is clear out there. It is out where I am right now. So in about 45 minutes with the sun setting here, it'll be fun to go out and see what's going on. I guess maybe it's too late for that. You've already seen it out there. And sorry, I'm not there in person, but not that sorry. We're adjourned at 6:42 PM. Thanks for attending, everybody. And the one thing I did start to say and I did finish is that I feel real comforted in the fact that the people who put their noses out to show an interest in this. All three are good people. They have good backgrounds. We can't go wrong on any one of the three. So I did want to thank them again, too, in closing. Thanks again. Good night.